I call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 5th, 2016 at 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast City Hall for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance? Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley.
Yeah.
Councilmember DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Maguire.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 21st council meeting and the June 28th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing the lifesaving efforts by Dawn Petrello and Jamie Rhodes.
Whereas on the evening of April 20th, 2016, a near tragedy occurred on Fairbank Lane in Palm Coast F-Section when a lawnmower accident trapped a man underneath the mower. And whereas Palm Coast residents Dawn Petrello and her daughter Jamie Rhodes happened upon the scene and found the lawnmower flipped over with the steering bar on the victim's neck. And whereas Dawn and Jamie were unable to lift the mower themselves, so Dawn called 911 while Jamie flagged down a passing motorist for assistance. And whereas the passing motorist and the two women worked together to move the mower, and then Dawn held the man's neck in place until Palm Coast Fire Department personnel arrived. And whereas the man was transported by ambulance to the hospital for treatment, and he is expected to make a full recovery. And whereas the life of the resident injured that afternoon was saved by the heroic and quick actions of these bystanders who realized immediate action was needed in this stressful emergency situation, and did all in their ability to assist. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council and the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that Dawn Petrello and Jamie Rhodes are commended for their service to humanity and for the courageous and selfless efforts to preserve human life. Signed this 5th day of July, 2016, City of Palm Coast Mayor John Nets.
We'll do speeches in a minute. So they're giving a citizen lifesaving award. Ron's one of our battalions here in the city. I've worked with Dawn for over 25 years. She was an EMT on rescue. I want to embarrass you on how long I've known you. They didn't have that one when I knew them years and years ago, so it's a family affair and it's good to see that they're still in the community and they're still out saving lives even when they're just going public, so. Congratulations. Thank you. I want to get hugged.
(Inaudible).
Okay, now you gotta make a speech.
Oh, thank you. You can go. Go ahead. I'm not good at making speeches and I don't consider myself, I can't speak for my daughter, a hero. I was in the ambulance for, you know, 20 years, been in the emails filled over that, and I would hope that any bystander would come by and do the same thing that we did. You know, I just am glad that this man is doing tremendously well considering he broke his back and he had to have surgery in Ormond, and he came by the other day to see me and my daughter and couldn't thank us enough. But like I said, this is just something I would do every day for anybody, but I thank you.
I totally agree with what my mom had said. It's not every day that you get to save a life, and it's pretty...
Awesome.
Awesome, I should say. I'm really glad he's okay. I'm glad we were able to save him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(Applause) Get your time. (Inaudible) In the middle.
(Inaudible).
All right. Smile. All right, one, two, three. Keep smiling. One, two, three.
(Inaudible) I don't believe that works. You know, we hear so many horrible things that go on in our lives, in our country. This is the kind of thing that restores your faith in mankind. I know our fire department offers courses to people, public safety, first aid, CPR. I would encourage everybody to see if you can't just get a little more skill. You never know when you're going to be called upon to save a life, and I know it's a very, very meaningful occasion, not only for the victim, but for the rescuer as well. Okay, moving on to agenda item number three, your resolution approving the nuisance abatement initial assessment. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is your annual notice that we have to put out for those people who did not take care of their property themselves. They did not meet standards, whether that was for trash and debris, or mowing the lawn, et cetera, and so we've hired contractors to take care of the private property. We then place a lien on the property, and if the lien is not paid, then we place the charges that we incurred on the people's property tax. In order to do that, there's this process that you have to give them a chance to pay it themselves ahead of time through this notice process, and that's what we're going through today. So this is the first notice, and then if anybody comes forth and pays it, they'll, we'll take it off, and then there'll be a final notice before it actually goes to the tax collector who will add it to their property taxes. So Mayor, you have to open it up to the public and receive comment, and other than that, we think it's ready for approval tonight.
So your City Council has any questions?
Just one question. Oh, go ahead.
The nuisance tax that's put on there, are we adding anything to the actual, whatever code enforcement gave them the first time? Do we add over and above that to the cost?
There's administrative costs for all the costs we incur with the notices and the paperwork, yes.
And they know that that's on there before it goes on their taxes?
That is included on the lien, yes.
On top of, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want you, under, this is in our code, and it's, they're provided multiple notices. Notices before the work is done, notices that when the work is done, they're provided with notice that the work has been done and that the amounts are due, they're given an opportunity, these folks are given an opportunity to go ahead and pay for the costs of the city, taxpayers coming out and rectifying. These are, this is only done for situations where it's deemed to be a public nuisance. It has to be that bad. And so, yes, they're aware on multiple occasions about the process. They're made aware of where they can find out more information, and they're aware of that there are some administrative, actual costs, administrative costs involved.
The costs, on top of the costs, or adding to that, is it just the cost of work we had done? Is that what this, what I'm looking at?
Correct.
Okay, plus an administrative.
Correct.
Okay. Other council questions? So you're going to open a meeting to the public. It's the opportunity for the public to speak on this item. Anyone wishing to be heard on agenda item number three, come up to the podium, give us your name, please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no mad dash to the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number four, resolution approving a contract with Medley Sports Construction in the amount of $95,000, $95,945 for dugout replacement project and expenditures in the amount of $48,000 to approve multi-purpose field number three at Indian Trail Sports Complex. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is part of our capital improvement program for this year. This is actually a couple of the projects we're doing out at the sports complex. Carl has kind of an overview for you tonight to show you some of the improvements we're doing out on Indian Trails. Carl, take it from here, please.
Okay. Good evening. As stated, I'm going to go through some various projects out there at Indian Trail Sports Complex that have occurred this year and some upcoming ones. There's really three sets of improvements. We have one restroom facility. That's the design and construction of a new restroom facility at the site. We're just in the beginning stages. We'll get into more detail on each of these in the upcoming slides. The second project are Field Three improvements. It's basically sod replacement and installation of an under-drain system. And then the baseball, softball field improvement projects, addition of four T-ball fields, new batting cage, new soft toss area, replacement of eight dugouts. This is a map showing the location of those three projects. On the right-hand side, which is the north end of the property at the school site, is the proposed restroom facility. In the center is the Field Three Improvement Project, and then the south end of the left-hand side is the baseball complex area where those projects are occurring.
Carl, where's the T-ball fields?
The T-ball, they're in the outfield area of the baseball fields. They're not shown graphically in here, but they are, they're in the outfield side of two of the fields.
Okay. Where it says baseball, okay, good. Right in there.
Yeah.
You're going to have to clear any land to do that?
No. The fields are built large, they're utilizing with 60-foot base spacing and between the, there's really two outfield fences. There's one for those 60-foot base fields, and then there's a larger or further distance field. So between those two fences is where they place the T-ball fields.
Beyond the chain link fences, there's trees, you won't have to do anything.
No, it was within existing field space of the original baseball fields.
Thank you.
Some more detail on the project number one, the restroom project. Basically, design has just begun. We held a kickoff meeting. We'll be meeting with some of the school district staff, locating a, picking a location on site. We'll be moving to the construction phase, going out to bid this fall, and looking to have the facility complete come springtime. Field Three improvements, this is installation. We'd like to begin this summer, very shortly, as soon as we, if we gain approval, we're ready to move forward. The survey and design has already been completed in-house. Roughly under-drain materials are about $18,000, which will be installed by city staff, and then there'll be replacement of the sod. There's a couple photos here that show the current existing conditions of that one particular field. Then we move on to the baseball, softball complex. These are projects that have already been completed this year. We had, it was also completed by in-house staff. We had four T-ball fields, roughly about 4,000 materials, and then we have some labor costs shown of what time we spent on the project. We had three soft toss stations, and then we had one batting cage. These were all completed in February. The upcoming project that we're looking to gain approval for is the baseball, softball dugout replacement. We received, went out to bid, we received three bids. The low bidder was Medley Sports Construction at just under $96,000. We have a couple photos here that show the deteriorated steel columns and beams of the dugout that are there now. So we had an overall budget for the two projects, not the restroom facility, that was an independent project that's funded separately, but between the sports fields and the baseball projects, we had $135,000 in the capital improvement funds. Little League obtained a grant and presented the city with funding of $20,000 to help cover some of the costs of these projects. So we had roughly $155,000, and with the completed improvements already in place and the proposed improvements will be just under $155,000 within budget. So we're looking for council action on two items. One is to approve a contract in $95,945 for the removal and replacement of eight existing dugouts, and also approval for Field Number Three project improvement expenses in the amount up to $48,000.
Carl, these dollars are all in the existing capital improvement budget?
Correct. Yes.
Council questions? Questions, we'll open the meeting to the public. Meeting to the public, which should be heard on agenda item number four. Come up to the podium, give us your name, launch your contribution to three minutes.
Good evening. Anita Modere, Palm Coast. We've had some serious scheduling issues with other contracts. Could you help us understand what is being done to ensure that the timing will be appropriate to this particular project and any of the other projects that are coming up for approval tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. You're going to approach the podium, we'll close the public portion, go back to council. Mr. Landon, how can we ensure that this contractor will be on time and on budget?
All of our contracts have what they call liquidated damages. It's basically a penalty for being late and the consequences for that. Typically, they're $1,000 a day, and we will have that in this contract too. Carl, unless you tell me for some reason it's a different amount on this one?
No, not on this particular one. In this one, we did verify with the manufacturer on the lead time of the dugouts to make sure that the project time all fit within getting all the materials here in time. As of right now, we do not see any projected schedule delays on this. We did some homework up front, talked to the contractors and manufacturers.
Well, we, you know, we don't expect schedule delays, but there's this thing we have called weather, and it really can screw up a construction schedule.
Yes, and those are taken into consideration too. You know, if they are rained out for the day, they're added, that's added to the contract time. There's a variety of reasons why projects get late. Some of it has to do just with the contractor not putting enough resources out there. Other times, they have good reasons.
Mr. Mayor, Council, so it's been my experience in working with a lot of other cities and construction projects that you find where the, where the project has a lot of groundwork, where you have to go underground and move a lot of dirt, sometimes you just don't know what you're going to find down there. And there can be muck, which can cause a lot of extra expenses and a lot of extra time. There can be utilities that are, that are down there that just no one, they're not, they're not in the right place, or they're just, weren't indicated in any of the plans. My understanding of this project is that they're not going to have to go below, really the surface, so, so those are the type of risks and uncertainties that you, that you have to take into consideration, certain types of projects, but not, not necessarily in this one.
I've got to add, you know, yes, we have a couple of projects that are behind, but most of our projects and most of the contractors have done a great job. I mean, this building here came in under budget, under time allotted for it. Palm Coast Parkway widening was another good one, where that was a very timely project. By far, most of them come in in time and under budget or at budget. Not all of them, and it has for a variety of reasons. Then when you don't, those are the ones that everybody talks about and don't talk about all the good news, so I had to throw in some of the good.
Let me ask a question. In regards to projects, when a contractor gives us a guesstimation, you know, he said, "Well, this is the timeframe we think," do we double that effort and look and see if we feel it's, we're, they're in the ballpark, right?
Actually, the engineer of record is the one that puts together the timeline.
Okay.
And in our contract documents and the bid documents, we tell them how long they have to complete the project.
Because we do, I mean, you know, I create projects daily, and there's always time included for rain, you know. We don't, I don't deal with rain, but, you know, there are, there is always a standard, you know, this is going to go wrong, because it can.
On all these, there's always that, you know...
Just like we have contingency, just like we have contingency on funds.
Yes.
There's got to be contingency on time.
Absolutely.
So if it's not in time, it's probably because of severe changes in climate or the contractor severely...
Had a problem.
Problem. Or you went out to put a T-ball field in and found a gopher tortoise. (Laughter)
You know, there's a...
I mean, you laugh, but you wouldn't believe what you have to go through to find this tortoise a new home. I know.
We, actually, the Holland Park project was delayed by about 20, 21 days, three weeks because of, we knew they were out there, but they don't like to be moved when it's too cold. And literally, the regulations require the temperature to be at a certain level during the day in order to move them, and we had a cold spell when we first got started, and they lost three weeks waiting for the temperature to go up so they could start digging, because the first thing they had to do was move the tortoises.
That's all governed by law.
Yeah. Is that the contractor's fault, the city's fault? No. Does it add to time? Yes.
Well, that's the extreme.
And don't get me wrong, you know, this contractor at, at Holland Park had problems. They had a subcontractor, underground kind of contractor, who they had to fire. And then that put the whole project behind, because that was right up front, and then that caused other domino effects. And right now, they are in that liquidated damage, so it's costing them every day that, and actually is saving us money every day. But the key we need is the park to be open, not to be saving money at this point, so that's where our big push is.
Additional questions, comments, or a motion on agenda item number four?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number five, presentation of certificates to graduating students of the City of Palm Coast Citizens Academy Class Number...
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Good evening.
Good evening. Are we coming down? Oh, you're coming down. Oh, good. We're all going down.
As the mayor pointed out, this is the graduating, the 37th graduating class of our Citizens Academy program. We have had a very delightful time of visiting all of our, with all of our city department heads, and each of you, thank you for your time. And we have visited various city facilities, the water plant, the community center, city hall, and the fire station 25. We had an unusual circumstance in that our, one of our classes in our graduation had to be delayed because of tropical storm Colin, which is something that doesn't happen too often, but maybe gave everybody a little bit extra insight into some of the things that happen sometimes when you have a local government. And we are a small graduating class, but a strong graduating class, so the mayor is going to assist me with distributing the graduation certificates, and so if each of the graduates, when your name is called, please come up, receive your certificate, and then assemble here, and we're going to do a group photo. All right. Dean Bauer.
Thank you very much.
George Breeze.
Eric, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Campbell.
He's on vacation.
I guess so. So probably Steve's on vacation, Steve Campbell. Janet Coria. Nancy Arenfeld.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Robert Flurry.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Donald Harris.
Thank you so much.
And Francis Harris. Alisa Klusman.
(Laughter) What's your own cheering squad?
I will say that we do have quite a few friends and family here tonight, which is very nice, and I'm encouraging all of them to attend the program themselves. Adella Ladas. And Dave Mizurandino missed his, or didn't miss his flight, but his flight took off late, so he missed graduation. Francis Mooney.
Francis, congratulations.
Thank you. David Swanson. Dot Whelan. And last but not least, Jennifer Wright, one of our youngest graduates ever.
(Laughter) All right. Congratulations. Council, would you join us, please? You guys are going to have to step forward so the City Council can kind of get the idea.
Make a couple rows.
Small ones?
Small ones.
(Laughter)
What a good-looking bunch you are. Very good class. Talk to her. All right, can I see everybody's face, Mr. Harris? Mr. Shipley? All right, one, two, three. We're going to take a couple. Keep smiling. One, two, three. We'll do one more. One, two, three. I think that's good. Congratulations. Thank you.
(Applause) I'd be remiss if I didn't offer a little plug for Citizens Academy. This is an opportunity for residents to learn in-depth about their city. So many things happen behind the scenes that you're not aware of until you go to a fire station, or you go to a water treatment plant, or utility plant, and see what's happening and see all the effort that goes on behind the scenes. So anybody listening, contact the city. We'd love to have you for Citizens Academy Number 38 coming up. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda items six, seven, and eight. Does anyone from the public want any of those items to be removed from the consent agenda, or would you like to speak on any of those items before City Council approves them as a group? Or disapproves them. Or disapproves them. The podium, sir.
Good evening, City Council. My name is John Brady. My issue with this funding for number eight is the process used to bring it to council for approval. The item was last on the workshop agenda on June 28th. This item was not discussed on June 28th. Now you're being asked for an expenditure of $660,000 to be voted on with no discussion. This item should be referred back to the workshop where further discussion can take place and the citizens can have more input in an item that is going to cost way north of half a million dollars. I have been told that there are grants coming to offset the total cost. I would like to hear more about these grants. And given the fact that three of the five of you will not be here come January, I think more public input should be sought before these kind of contracts are approved. You are indebted to city, and you will not be part of the...
What a good-looking bunch you are. Very good. Not true. All right, can I see everybody's face, Mr. Harris? All right, one, two, three. We're going to take a couple. Keep smiling. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. That's good. Congratulations.
This is an opportunity for residents to learn in depth about their city. So many things happen behind the scenes that you're not aware of until you go to a fire station or you go to a water treatment plant or utility plant and see what's happening and see all the effort that goes on behind the scenes. So anybody listening, contact the city. We'd love to have you for Citizens Academy Number Thirty-eight coming up. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda items six, seven, and eight. Does anyone from the public want any of those items to be removed from the consent agenda or would you like to speak on any of those items before city council approves them as a group?
Or disapproves them.
Or disapproves them. The podium, sir.
Good evening, city council. My name is John Brady. My issue with this funding for number eight is the process used to bring it to council for approval. The item was last on the workshop agenda on June twenty-eighth. This item was not discussed on June twenty-eighth. Now you're being asked through an expenditure of $660,000 to be voted on with no discussion. This item should be referred back to the workshop where further discussion can take place and the citizens can have more input in an item that is going to cost way north of half a million dollars. I have been told that there are grants coming to offset the total cost. I would like to hear more about these grants. And given the fact that three of the five of you will not be here come January, I think more public input should be sought before these kind of contracts are approved. You are indebted to city and you will not be part of the decision-making process. I hope that our contract prevents the disaster known as Holland Park. And since I mentioned Holland Park and was mentioned before, I would like to know why this is not a criminal matter. If we paid a contractor and he was supposed to pay subcontractors and didn't pass that matter along, it seems to me that that would be a criminal matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Signal approach the podium, a closed public portion meeting, come back to city council. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda items six, seven?
Number seven, Mr. Mayor.
You'd like to remove number seven?
Yes.
Okay, we're taking number seven off. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items six and eight?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number seven, Mr. Landon.
I just got a question.
Yeah.
And actually, it was a question asked of me and so I'm just bringing it out. In this study, what, if any, impact to residents is included? So, you know, we're talking Florida Park and so when we do these studies, what in that aspect, looking at, okay, here's the impact, is that included in any way? How the traffic will impact certain areas or sections?
Just for background, for the audience, what this is, is a contract with a engineering firm to update our traffic impact fees or transportation impact fees. And what that is, is that every time you have new development, it obviously impacts your infrastructure. And we have impact fees for utilities, transportation, parks, fire. And in order to assess that impact, you have to help determine or attempt to determine exactly what the impact they're going to have on, in this case, your street network as far as capacity goes. These fees have to be spent on adding capacity, in other words, lanes. You widen the streets, you put in a left turn lane, a right turn lane, those type of things that actually adds capacity to the street. So to get to your question, Mr. Nobill, the assessment would be if you're going to continue to see houses go up, that actually increases your traffic. Our residential streets, two-lane residential streets, you know, there aren't any plans, there won't be any plans in the future to actually widen those streets. Florida Park Drive, for example, you don't have, we don't have any plans to widen it and I don't see that happening.
Well, I'm just thinking of other areas.
So in any of the, any of the other areas. So what it really does is assesses your major arterials. Let's take a Royal Palms, up north, it may be Metanza's Woods Parkway, those that are two lanes and do they need to go four lanes?
Right.
The good thing from the neighbors, the drivers, is that as you add capacity, you add more efficiency in your network. So it gets cars through faster, which saves time, but also saves on time stopped and the fumes and all the things that go along with idling at stop signs or backed up in traffic. So that's the impact it has on the neighbors, really. But as far as the residential streets, no, this doesn't attempt to determine what kind of impacts are actually having on the residential streets per se.
Is there a follow-up traffic study after that? Or let me rephrase that, we wouldn't do it after that. We would do that before implementation or before the advancement of any of these recommendations.
Well, what they, yeah, what they look at is, they call it modeling. And they say, okay, if you're going to add residential development, if you're going to add commercial, whatever the zoning is of that property that's vacant and it's developed, they, the engineers basically know approximately how many trips that will generate every day. And then they look at what kind of capacity each one of the streets has, if it's two-lane, four-lanes, and the impact it will have on each one of those streets. So, and then if it, they predict as a result of this modeling that you really be more efficient if you had four lanes instead of two lanes, then it would show the impact that widening that would have and how that would help the flow and, et cetera. So do they come back later after this study? No, this is not to come back later unless you update it. And then every, I think it's three to five years, Jose, we're.
Six years.
Six years?
Yes, sir.
Every six years, we're required to update it. And then at that time, they would remodel it all over again and it's based on, you know, we do traffic counts every year. So it really does not impact the residential streets as much as your major arterials.
Okay, one more follow-up. Sorry. Philosophy of an impact fee. Is that for immediate addition to infrastructure and then the increased taxes? So you're developing a property, so obviously the taxes on that property are going to increase. Is the philosophy that the impact fee is to make changes to immediate impacts and then the taxes are for services?
Services and maintenance. But when they do the study, they won't have new development pay for all of the impacts because some of the existing areas are also causing that impact. So there's.
And benefit.
Benefit, yes. And so there's a balance of how much the, and they call it, you know, they have to have the nexus between your impact from the development and how much you pay for that versus how much the existing community benefits from the widening of the streets. And that's all part of the formula, it's all part of how the law works, is that development's supposed to pay for itself, but it's not supposed to supplement your tax dollars, it is actually just supposed to add for those specific impacts. That's one of the reasons why you update it every year is to make sure that that balance is being maintained. Or not every year, every six years. So hopefully that answers the question.
Yep, that's what I.
If I could chime in, planners and lawyers like to make the distinction between taxes and fees or assessments. Because when you pay taxes, which local governments can only charge if authorized by the state, we can only charge those taxes that are specifically, we have the power to do so by the Florida legislature. Assessments and fees are different in that they have to be used for a specific purpose. Mr. Landon indicated that nexus, that relationship between the money that's being paid by the developer, the property owner, the contractor, to be used for a specific purpose. That's what, one of the main reasons it's different than a tax. When people pay their ad valorem taxes, it's putting into the general fund, which can be used for, it can be used for transportation, but it can be used for parks and wrecks, it can be used for public works, it can be used for fire or whatever. Those are general purpose types of funds that come in from taxes as opposed to fees and assessments, which are, which are bound by law to be used for certain things. And in this case, it's for improvements to our roadway facilities.
Good. Thank you. Let me comment, please.
I think the easiest way to think about this is that this is, this study's going to come back and tell us what roadway expansions, to the best of their ability, they believe we're going to need between now and 2040.
Right.
Identify all the funding sources that could contribute to that road network and find out what the gap is and identify that as the fee.
Okay, so we can come up.
That's the simplest way to put it.
Okay, sounds good. All right, since we did remove that from the consent agenda and from the public wish to speak on agenda item number seven, this is a contract with Lasso Transportation Group to complete the transportation impact fee study.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. What's this going to cost us?
We'll get you an answer. Next speaker. Signal approach the podium, a closed the public portion meeting. Mr. Landon, without me running through the book, what is the contract fee?
Contract fee is $71,200.
And as both the attorney and Mr. Landon point out, this is not something that we have any choice in the matter, this is mandated by state statute.
Mr. Mayor, one thing. It's also, it's being paid for by existing transportation impact fees. So it actually costs a taxpayer nothing, it's fees that have already been collected for transportation improvements.
And just finally, this is part of a group of fees which we call impact fees. And the whole concept behind impact fees is development pays for itself. Let me give you an example. We're building a second wastewater plant. We don't need that for our existing residents. If we were to declare a building moratorium and say, no more houses can be built in Palm Coast, nobody else can move in, nothing can be added, no more businesses, no more nothing, we'd get by with our existing utility plant. But because we do anticipate growth and you need to plan for that growth, we're putting that plant in. And I might add that one of the reasons, one of the underlying reasons that you do long-term borrowing for those kinds of large capital projects is so the future growth gets to pay its share. Anyway, come back to city council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on agenda item number seven?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. If you have something you'd like to share, come up to the podium, give us your name and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Since we're such, we're growing so well and so fast, I'd like to bring up the charter again. I still think we need somebody to, or a group, to review the charter and come back with something else. I don't think five people is enough for the growth of our city.
Thank you.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. I would like to find out if there would be something printed that the residents could read as far as when a project is going to go out for bid, so that we could find out what the entire bidding process is, from the time that the project gets created to how many people have to bid on it, what's the bidding process, how many days do they have to before the bid gets accepted, and is there public hearings on a bid? So I'd like to find out if there's something in writing that I could read so I could know exactly, like for instance, if they're going to put that traffic signal up. I didn't hear anything as far as bids or what they proposed, it was just $125,000 and the engineer said that we're only going to recoup a third of it. Well, I'd like to find out what's, so when something goes out and is there a minimum price before something has to go out for bid or does the city have the right to just approve something if it's below a certain amount of money? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get an answer for that question. Next speaker.
My name is Simmons Jones and I'm a resident of Palm Coast. And I'm concerned because I heard something that was brought up, you know, there was something that was on the agenda for the workshop. It wasn't talked about on the workshop, but then you bring it up here in this meeting in the consent agenda and you pass it. Now, that's troubling to me because that's not giving John Q. Public a chance to respond or to talk about the issue. You know, to me, that doesn't seem that it's a proper way of doing things. If you do have something on agenda and you don't talk about it on the agenda, but then in the next meeting, you go ahead in the consent agenda and put it forth, to me, you just made a unilateral decision which didn't include the public. And so, you know, where is the respect to the public and where is the responsibility to the public?
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Karen Gaddis, Palm Coast. I just have a question. We, we have a homeless situation with this lady on the bench every day. What can we do about this? I mean, she's on a walking trail and people are feeding her, she's leaving garbage. Is there something you guys can do about that?
We'll get an answer for your question.
I've written a newspaper. She's, she's just a nuisance and everybody that walks the trail is just really aggravated by it. What can you guys do about this homeless lady?
Get an answer for your question.
Anita Modere, Palm Coast. So last meeting, a $500,000 appropriation was made for lights on Palm Coast to improve the traffic flow. Today, without discussion, we just approved $660,000 for the reclaiming, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't hear any projects being brought forward that will help our citizens particularly. It comes up time and time again and I see eyeballs roll and shoulders shrug. When are you going to address the senior center? When are you going to look at programs for our young people and our young adults? Instead of these programs, maybe the people of the city would prefer to trade off some beautification down Pelter for some of the programs that would help our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Good evening, George Mello, Palm Coast. Having just read in the paper, I brought this subject up once before, this past week of the City of DeBarry incurring $260,000 plus legal fees from not adhering to sunshine laws and everything else that's going on within the city, which has basically been self-inflicted. Again, makes me glad that I live in Palm Coast because basically our city council, I want to thank for working together cohesively, also working together with the city manager and his staff do a great job. And just, again, I'm glad we don't, I don't live in DeBarry and you show us how a city should be run without a lot of hassle, adhering to the sunshine laws and everything else. And again, number two, I would like to see something about a, in the future, of a senior center put on a consent agenda, or a workshop, I'm sorry, talk about it. I think that is something we do need to look for in the, in the near future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Signal approach the podium, a closed the public portion meeting, come back to council. Let's see if we can address some of those issues. The issue of city charter, there are several ways in which a charter review can be conducted. City council can initiate it. A petition by residents can initiate it. A petition by residents can actually put an item on the charter. Best comment I can offer is that city council is elected to use its best judgment. I think the five people that sit up here and the five people that will sit up here after November are probably more intimately aware of what goes on in the city and those kind of decisions help influence what they do and do not vote upon. Mr. Landon, the reclaimed water main discussion or lack thereof, any comments?
Well, the comments, it wasn't discussed at the workshop are just false. It was discussed at the workshop, it wasn't major discussion because it's the third or fourth time it's been come up on a workshop. And so there has been numerous discussions. Let me, first of all, this is really the second phase of this portion, which is from State Road 100 down to the Grand Landings residential development, which has reclaimed irrigation lines in that residential area, but doesn't have any reclaimed water down there yet. We first discussed this at a workshop in a city council meeting to extend it beyond the new racetrack site there, right at the corner of State Road 100 and Seminole Woods to get it out of that construction area. So we extended it that far. And then you approved the design work for this a few months ago. So we had the engineering contract to design the work. And then last week, it was once again on the agenda, was briefly discussed by city council. You'd already heard it numerous times before, so wasn't a lengthy discussion. And then the interesting part is, is that because it was on that agenda, we have residents out here and the audience were aware of it, that gave them opportunity to comment on it, which one of them did. And so tonight, it also had the opportunity for public to participate in this. So as, what I just described is actually almost all our capital projects. It goes through the. It goes through the capital improvement program, then it has to be approved in the budget, then we have to approve the design, you know, on and on. So there's multiple steps and this was an example of that. So I personally think, you know, it's a very good process. It gives people, the workshops give people the opportunity to know about it coming up instead of just hearing about it when you take action on it. But the budget and the capital improvement plan, which isn't typical, we have a 10-year capital improvement plan that then is narrowed down to five years and then the yearly appropriations. So all those, very proud of how that process works and the numerous times public have opportunity to comment.
Your honor, if I could tag on to that, what the public doesn't see, because there's a workshop and then there's a business meeting, is every one of these council members, including myself, are up at city hall on a regular basis. The staff members that you see sitting at that table in the rear, you can find out whatever you want to know in as much depth as you want to know by talking to the staff member who is responsible for that facet of the city's operation. If you talk to the city manager and you want to get more in depth, you can find out. I've been doing this for almost five years and I rarely sit down with the city manager outside of this meeting because I get the information I want by going to city hall and talking to the appropriate staff member who reports to Mr. Landon. And that's what the public doesn't see. But that's where we put a lot of hours in, doing our homework before we come up for a vote on this sort of thing.
Yeah, my suggestion would be, you know, I'm on council, I'm only on council two years. And there are things that come up that I, you know, they were started long before, you know, I got on the council and I have to do my due diligence. I have to investigate and I better so that when these votes come up. But I would suggest to anyone who is feeling like it's not a lot of information coming up, get in contact with your council member and deal with it that way. Outside of the three minutes here, you know, we will be more than happy to sit down and explain where the whole process is in that. And then at the end, if you still feel like, well, you know what, that didn't work, then you can come up and, you know, bring it here. But we have that information or, and if we don't, we'll get that information for you. So you need to maybe get in touch with us to get deeper. And like I said, some of the things, a lot of stuff is coming up, comes up and I wasn't here when it started, so I ask questions. But once I'm here, you know, we, like this particular project, we've been working through this, it seems like a year of conversations about this. So when it came up, it was all, okay, this is just the next, you know, 50 feet and, you know, we're going to work it, so.
To that point of view, the question about project bid, presentation, specifications, how can the public access that information?
A lot of those questions are outlined in our purchasing policy that actually outlines the process we have to follow. Some of it's dictated by state law. And yes, there's a lot of things online that people are interested in bidding and those that, like signal contractors who want to use, they know how to tap into that process. I would suggest to individual, to get more information and actually get those documents, talk to Mr. Faugu in the back and he can coordinate either any of the documents or sitting down with our purchasing manager to go through all those details. But that would be the best way to get all that information. But yeah, it's out there in writing on our website, any way you can.
Now, let me ask this question. I like to know when something's coming up also, in case I'm not paying attention that week. So I went on the website and I actually set up notifications.
Yep.
And I get an email when something is coming out, you know, and for bids. And then I, then I have two options. I go on the website and see what's there and if I don't like it, if it's not enough, then I call Mr. Landon or, you know, whoever and get further details. So you can actually get notifications when something is, it'll send you an email and say, this is going out. And that's anything from jobs to purchase contracts.
Yes.
Or if you want to do it on your own, you just go, use the city's website, go government, departments, purchasing, and then you can do a search of individual ones or get the entire list.
Question about an alleged homeless woman on the biking trail. Till somebody can tell me what law she's breaking, I don't think the city has any role there. Commander, do you have any comments? It's not against the law to sit on a city park bench.
While we're waiting, I know we actually receive this comment fairly often and why don't we find something, give them some resources? But oftentimes we do, but they choose to sit on the bench all day. And so you can offer them, but you can't make them take advantage of some of those resources.
And I don't believe the resident, I think she meant it just that way. She wants help for the woman, some way to find something, something that could help her, not that she thinks it's against the law to be on the bench.
They have to be able to accept that.
I was gonna, Ms. Landon said just to the point, it was brought to my attention just recently. I agree, there is no law. I was going to research a little bit. I wasn't really prepared to talk about it tonight, but I've seen the lady in question. I was going to look after it after the long holiday weekend, which was a long hot holiday weekend, by the way. But we can encourage her to move along, we can try and get her some help, but as Ms. Landon said, if she doesn't want to go, right now she's not breaking any laws. And until she does, you know, I will take a look at some, what some other cities are doing, but.
And it is my understanding that someone from the sheriff's department has already made her aware of services that the county social service department has. She chose not to avail herself of them.
Yes, sir. We've checked on her, we've offered her, we would be willing to give her a ride down to wherever it may be, a shelter or whatever. She's turned us down.
Mark, isn't that the lady you and I went out to see one day?
Nope.
On Pine Lakes Parkway?
No, she did move along, Councilman Maguire, but there is another lady on the bike path. I know who she's talking about.
But a lot of these people, and I'm sure Commander Carmen will agree, a lot of these people are in need of help that's beyond just, you know, giving them some advice or a sandwich. They're mentally ill. But like Mark says, if you're not breaking a law or you're not violating a city ordinance, you've got as much right as any other citizen because you're a citizen, whether you're homeless or not, and, you know, you can't discriminate against them.
Ms. Landon, I'll look into it further.
Thank you. The last comment had to do with the worth to the residents of traffic lights and intersection optimization. That certainly has, brings a value to all residents as opposed to a senior center. That has been brought up at several workshops by the public. I would suggest that for those of you who think that that is a worthwhile endeavor for the city, again, speak to your councilmen. Any council member at any time can bring that up. Understand that it's not just a simple saying, let's do it. There's a cost involved, assuming you, and what the rumor I'm, not the rumor, what I'm hearing is people want a standalone, separate center from the community center. So there's land acquisition, construction costs, staffing costs, operational costs. Of course, the city can do it. It's a question of putting it into the capital budget and then spending those money at the appropriate time.
Also, it's in our plan. We have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan and there are senior centers included in that plan, so we just haven't got to that part of the plan.
If I could add, I always like to put a plug in also is that the next project that will help in this because it will provide a larger venue is the expansion of the community center. And that is intended to be a project that will help provide more space for more programs and whether it's for seniors or for the youth, but it would be multi-generational to try to help with that. And that is slated to get started within the next 12 months. So that is really the next project that will help in this. I just want to make, sometimes I think the community doesn't realize the impact that will have on us.
It started within the next six months.
Yeah. Yes, I think it's scheduled for, probably don't want to get it started because of those delays we talked about with projects just before the holidays, so like next January is a better time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one thing too. I got a lot of feedback on those last two items combined with the signal optimization and the senior center. So there was a lot of, I got several emails that said, why do you spend the $500,000? Why can't we put up a senior center with that money? And the question, the answer I gave everybody was, you can't. That money has to be used in transportation. We can't just take it and build a senior center where, it came from fuel taxes, right? Fuel taxes and local and state fuel taxes. So, and it has to be used there. We can't just build anything with that, with those funds. But I did get a lot of questions in that regard with those two combined.
Excellent point.
Just wanted to say that.
And Mr. Mill, it goes back to the point that we were talking about earlier this evening, that there are different pots of money and there's legal restraints in how you use those funds from those different pots of money. And that's a perfect example of how the law does provide some constraints on local government and how it uses its revenues.
Yes, good. Okay. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. Mr. Maguire.
No, sir. I have nothing to offer.
Novio. Mr. De Lorenzo.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Shipley. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
I just want to follow up on one comment that we heard this evening about the gentleman who is grateful that the city does not expend tens of, or hundreds of thousands of dollars for litigation and lawsuits. And I think it's only appropriate for me to make sure that this council and citizens are aware of the good work that's done by our city clerk in responding to continuing public records requests under chapter 119. And they are fraught with all sorts of little tricks under chapter 119 that folks use to try to get cities like the city of Palm Coast in trouble. And we, knock on wood, we, every day, there's a new test for us, but she does a great job in making sure that the citizens' taxpayers' monies are protected.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Mayor, city council, only thing I have is you should have a document in front of you. Or do I just have that, Virginia?
Just you.
Just me, okay. It's just the annual voting delegation responsibility at the Florida League of Cities, where they have policies and things at the league, you know, the organization that everybody here in Florida, all municipalities. And they look for one delegate from each city to be able to vote on those policies. And so you all just volunteer somebody each year. And I actually don't remember the process, but yeah, usually points fingers and...
City council chooses one delegate. Who was our representative last year? Are you volunteering again?
I can.
Oh, hand go up. I did too. By acclamation, Vice Mayor Shipley will be our voting delegate for the League of Cities Council.
Agreed.
Thank you. It was a tough job last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's rough.
Hard to stay awake.
Okay.
My last thing, I just want to say thank you to everybody that helped make this last weekend. It was a long, hot weekend, but we had a couple of great events here in Palm Coast. Big thank you. And I think the, everything I heard was very positive, both the dawn's early light and then the fireworks Sunday night.
I always figure this is, it's good, an event, when I can get home before midnight when it ends. I mean, everything moved so smoothly. I mean, we pulled out right after the fireworks with all those people that were there and it just moved. And I was like, yes, that's it. I don't care about the fireworks. I want to get home.
Very, very large crowd. I want to, lastly, not to pour cold water on this, but after every fourth, the emails start coming, how come the city allows fireworks in the residential areas? And you have some people that go overboard and shoot them off all night long, one o'clock. The fact of it is, they are not legal in our residential areas. And it's one of those laws that people do not respect oftentimes. It would be virtually impossible for the deputies to go try to determine who's shooting off fireworks in their backyard. And so, but just to try to get that word out that, you know, fireworks are great to go out and watch on the beach or Central Park, but in the backyard, they do cause a lot of problems and they're not legal.
And in addition to that, Mr. Landon, a lot of people don't realize that with our demographics in the city of Palm Coast, if there's one thing a combat veteran does not want to hear, it's lots of loud booms in the night.
Yep. So every year, we try to get that word out, but every year, we have the same problem. But it is, it truly can be a problem for people. And it's, we're not dry this year, but it's really scary when we're dry and the vacant lots and the roofs and those type of things is another good reason because there's been many a properties lost because of fireworks in residential areas. So not to pour cold water on it, but just try to get that out because that is something that we get on a regular basis. But mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you all.